Tonight's agenda is around getting ready for the site visits, for the superintendent visits by our four candidates, our four finalists. First item on our agenda is to, just for those of us who were onsite visits this past week, to go over what our impressions were and fill other members in on what we learned about our finalists. And after we are able to do that, then we're going to go to the second item, which is getting ready, putting the protocol together for the interviews that we'll be doing at the end of each day that the candidate spends here. So having said that, I think what I'd like to do is start one candidate at a time, probably take them in the order that we saw them, and just open it up to conversation. Does that sound okay to everybody as a way to proceed? All right, so on, let's see, it was Monday of last week, so just a week ago, we went to Winchandon and we met with staff and the community members for Brooke Clinchy, who's a superintendent in the Winchandon Public Schools. On that visit were Mark, Kathy, myself, and Lori. So I'll open it up for comments about what people noted about that visit.
Well, I noted that Brooke certainly has a lot of support from every group that we visited with in her district. We visited with the parent group, we visited with the town group, teachers and administrators, and they were all very complimentary of her skills as an administrator, as well as just her kindness as a person, and that was very meaningful to them. And that's what I remember about her.
The kindness was a big piece. We, over and over again, heard the story about a tragedy that had happened in the district, and folks tied in how, kind of, it was a managerial story, but also a kindness story because of her attention to detail, and how she was very, very careful to make sure that the needs of students and staff were being met in dealing with that tragedy. So people pointed to that over and over again as, you know, evidence of her interpersonal skills and caring nature.
Yeah, I think the other thing that was impressive is that she was really, seemed to be, the one that spearheaded bringing the district out of Level 3, or whatever, they had been underperforming, or whatever it was. So she definitely had earned a lot of respect from, you know, the principals, and the teachers, and the community for doing that. I think the community is very proud of that, that they were the first ones to be lifted out of that underperforming umbrella. And, you know, they really credited Brooke with that leadership.
I'd like to go back on the schedule of that, by the way, and just see exactly when that happened in terms of, because I had some confusion as to that. Did you have a clear sense that it happened under her leadership?
It happened as she was coming into the district.
It was just as she was coming in. I mean, we did talk about it a lot, but it was just as she was coming, they were coming out. So I'm a little, I'm not convinced exactly how much she's to be credited with that. Yeah, although you're right, it did sort of, it definitely, she, they talked a lot about it in terms of her leadership, so.
One thing that was remarkable, we had a, some of our meetings were with larger groups, but there was a particular meeting that was just with a couple people, or maybe just one person, the union president, who had a lot to say, the teachers' union president, who had been there for years, had a lot to say about their, how much respect she had for Brooke, and their cordial relationship, and she respected her during negotiations, and thought that she was fair, and that they worked really well together, and that she wouldn't say that about everybody. So I remember that.
She also has a school committee member who's a former superintendent, who speaks very highly of her skills. So clearly someone who's been in those shoes knows what he's talking about. So overall, you know, one of the things that specifically came up was the, she did the meetings with the job-alikes. Remember how we kept hearing about the job-alikes? And people were very, very impressed with that, you know, that she brought together people who had similar titles from across the district, and thought that that was something new and innovative.
Well, they was, as a district, they have a similar budget to ours. Or actually, they're a little smaller than us, and a little less budget. They're able to sort of get the expenditure per pupil to be similar. I was taken by Brooke's staff and all of their comments about her ability to get them to be able to step up and implement a variety of different programs that have really helped that district. It's a tough area, economically depressed area, and they've still been able to do quite well with Brooke there and her admin team. And they all spoke well of her ability to help them be better teachers, administrators, et cetera. So, pretty impressive visit, I had to say. Their scores are fairly comparable to ours, not quite as good as ours overall from a standpoint of MCAS, et cetera. But they are struggling from a standpoint of budget in that district. So she seems to be doing quite a good job with the money that she does have. And I think you'll hear that across the folks we saw. They were all highly regarded on their ability to mentor their people and get more out of them. I thought, as Lori said, their relationship with the union and their ability to manage teacher assessment and improving teachers along the way was, I thought, was exceptional. It may be the best of the three candidates I saw.
We did have that, the conversation about the mentoring teachers and also evaluations. I think we had that in every location. You know, I think, since we're talking about Brooke, I felt satisfied with her approach to making sure that people are held accountable, and that people who are teaching are getting the support they need, whether they're succeeding and they need support to continue, or whether they're struggling and they need some support to bring them along. I felt like she was right on target with that, so I was definitely satisfied.
Yeah, absolutely. She gave examples as well. I mean, she understood that there was a problem at some point. She used data to figure out that something was happening, that she wanted to see improvement on, and she called her staff together and she laid it all out. She was very honest and direct about what, where the problems were and what needed to be done. And now I think they have some data that shows improvement. So, and we heard that story a few times during the day, so I think we were very impressed with her ability to tackle that.
Yep, they also have the RTI and the PBS.
That's right.
She also has those two foundations that support the school. There's actually money that she gets to decide how to spend it. That's one of the ways that she's able to balance her budget. There's those two endowments, or whatever, that she's able to manage, which is a blessing.
Right, that's been helpful.
And she's got an arts background, so she had a very strong arts support in her district also, so.
We had the opportunity to meet with some students, and the students all knew who she was, or they reported that other students knew who she was, and that they felt very supported by her. They see her out and about in the district. So it was nice to hear from the students. And with respect, Kathy, to the RTI and the PBIS, they're pretty much where we are with those programs. We met with some other districts that were at different points along the spectrum as far as implementing it, and I think Brooke's district was closest to where we are here in Ashland.
Very vivacious out there in the community. Had been able to turn a tough community, you know, to her support. You know, clearly knew everybody's name. As you mentioned, the like meetings, meaning that she'd, you know, have meetings with all the different levels of folks. She just wasn't hanging out with their administrators. So definitely all around the district, and well-known and appreciated by all the folks we talked to.
Do you remember talking about, you know, why she was looking to come to Ashland? Folks have something to say about that?
Well, I think across the board, I didn't get to go yesterday, but I think across the board in Winchandon, East Bridgewater, and Pittsfield, I think all three candidates desire to leave a sort of, they're sort of at the end of their political ability to manage in their districts. And they're subtly different. Winchandon not, you know, struggling to fund the schools at the level the schools need to help Brooke move further, where I think Pittsfield was sort of a change of the guard at the top, and a big change in the school committee there that was driving the change there. And then a similar economic issue, and overall town support issue in East Bridgewater. So I think all three of those candidates have done as much as they can in their respective districts, and it's time for them to move on.
Hey, anything to move on for the second day? This is gonna, we're gonna be turning mostly to YouTube, because on the second day, on Tuesday, Lori and I were unable to make that trip, so Mark and Kathy made the trip out to Pittsfield to meet with Dr. Barbara Malkus. What can you share with us about her?
Ladies first.
I don't know, it's part of the week, really, doing four in a week. But I guess, given that most of us went on all the other ones, and I was the only one that went to all of them, the thing that stands out to me about the Pittsfield visit was, we probably met with a lot more people, for one. When it was asked for central office staff, I have here at least 14 people that were at the table. So there were a lot more people that she brought in. I think, I felt like we visited with just more people. The other thing that was different about the visit, she had us moving to different schools instead of just staying in one central location, which actually was a nice break, to get out in the fresh air and move. And because I grew up in Pittsfield and graduated from Teconic High School, I knew where all the schools were, so we kind of could cruise around.
It's a trip down memory lane.
Yeah, I had a lot of fun, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Yeah, I did, I had a lot of fun out in my old hometown. So, I mean, I think all of the information, at least that I heard about Barbara, was very similar to what I heard about Brooke, and, well, about all the candidates. Very approachable, very parent-friendly, very knowledgeable, very well-organized, you know, runs a good meeting, gets the agendas out, takes a lot of notes, gets back to people. She is a deputy superintendent, which we had to kind of understand that hierarchy a little bit ourselves, because we weren't really familiar with what that meant. She's responsible for evaluating the nine principals. She really, that position really essentially runs very similar to our superintendent position. She works closely with the business manager in regards to grant applications and setting budgets, evaluations. She's responsible for organizing all the professional development. I think there was a lot of pluses around that from the people that we met with. They all were, felt very, that she brought together great professional development, that when she brought an initiative in, she always provided the appropriate professional development so that people could get trained on it appropriately, and then she stuck it out with keeping the programs alive, whether that meant going back to school committee to get it budgeted if the grant ran out, or whatever, the things that she believed in. She provided the proper training, and then she saw them through. One example was the coaching, that they had apparently had a grant for like a math coach, an ELA coach, and a data coach at the high school. And so they had these people trained, and they were, you know, working not only with the teachers, but also doing some tutoring with the children. And it was to bring their scores up, because again, they had some Level 3 schools, I believe, in their district. So eventually the grant ran out, they still needed funding, but she went before the school committee, and it was a, and this was not from her, this was from people that we met with, but they felt that it was hard for her to convince the school committee that we do need coaches for teachers, that a lot of times the sense is, well gee, they're teachers. What do we need a coach for the teacher for, you know? But that she kind of, very professionally, politely, but very stick-to-itive, brings her data, well-prepared, got her point across, they fund their coaches. So that was just an example, but we heard a lot of that throughout the day. I would say consistently.
Yeah, all three candidates, I think, that I saw are very strong. As I've heard, all four candidates are very strong. This may have been an area where Dr. Malkus was, you know, maybe a little, a little more experienced, a little more involved than the other candidates that I saw. Is a very different district. I mean, you know, here in Ashland, we've got 2,700 kids. In Pittsfield, there's 6,500 kids. Their budget's 82 million versus our, you know, 31 million when you roll up all the grants and everything else. It's a significantly different program. It's a significantly larger administrative program. There is a lot of staff around there. Her job as the deputy superintendent is primarily curriculum-driven, and working on curriculum, and working on the other adjacent pieces that help deliver the curriculum, help manage the coaches, help, you know, deliver some of the PD. We talked to her superintendent at length, and he had, you know, glowing regard for her. Because it's such a big district, she'd go to school committee meetings, they don't call them selectmen.
City council.
City council, thank you. City council meetings, and represent her piece of the pie. So she had plenty of experience out in the, in the public and out in the community, and was well-regarded as all, all three candidates were. So it was very interesting to go and see a giant district, considering, you know, our position, where certainly Winchandon, a little smaller, and East Bridgewater, a little more similar to us, maybe the most similar to us. But it was interesting to see their operation. Like the other candidates, very good, high level of respect for Dr. Malkus. Certainly very professional, comes, you know, she comes across very professional, but when Kathy and I sat with her at the end, to talk to her alone, it was a very relaxed conversation. She was very at ease with us, so another good candidate, I mean.
Yeah, and although they didn't, she didn't have a name for it, the like meetings, like Brooke did, she called, but she did that. She, we had art teachers, we had PE teachers, we had a couple of music teachers, so that talked about how, gee, nobody's ever asked me before, but, you know, she got us all together, and it's, you know, National Music in the School Month, and we're doing all these community concerts, and she's been going and introducing, and. So she did, and another, when we were at the elementary school, I know they, they were saying how, well, she even knows the custodians by name. She does always know a little something personal about someone, so she kind of can check in.
Very good at working the room, meeting people, remembering the name and face, so that they felt appreciated next time she came by.
Did you guys have the chance to meet any students that day?
There were no students in that loop in Pittsfield.
There were no students, no. There were more community people. There was a gentleman from the community college that had organized a grant for the National Science Foundation, and she, they had partnered with Barbara, and she had served on that committee, and he had very high regard for her. There was a gentleman from the local cable station, who she does a TV show twice a month called School For Thought, and he said she always comes well-prepared. She always has two schools that she highlights, and then they do that little onsite kind of thing to finish up the program, and she's always bright on, spot on. He said it's kind of a difficult thing, because you're kind of Skyping in an interview live to wherever the school is, but he felt like she managed that well. You know, again, Pittsfield is very different. The other thing that her role is, which I was happy to hear, not that her role was, but her role is the disciplinarian. She does all the discipline hearings. Of course, Pittsfield has a lot of alternative programming. They also have a lot of therapeutic classrooms, they have behavioral classrooms. But all of the people that spoke to, and we did speak to some social workers, we talked to some guidance counselors from some of these programs, and some from the regular schools, they always felt that she was fair. They always felt that they, that she listened to everyone. They felt that she was not a reactive person, that they had seen her up against some very difficult, challenging parents, and that she was always very responsive, but not reactive, and that she always left people feeling like they had been listened to. Nobody ever left angry, even if they weren't happy with the decision. And that she had never expelled a student, that she was very committed to seeing even the most challenging student educated. And that they have various programs, of course, there that they can place.
Because of their size, they had a lot more supports to be able to do.
They can kind of place kids into, but, so we met with a lot of people. We met with somebody that actually runs a program when they have kids that are suspended. They didn't want the kids sitting home for a five-day suspension, so they go over to a program that's actually housed at the old jail, and they, you know, work with the kids, and they get the books from the, you know, from their schools, and they bring them over there, and they get the assignments, and they make sure the kids are, you know, on track for when they get back in. And even when kids are placed out, they always try, if they can, to bring them back, you know, for the next year, if it's a possibility, if it's a kid that's really been moved out. So I liked, I appreciated that commitment to the kids and the education. And again, I think we've seen that commitment across the board with all of our candidates.
Given how different the district is, did you get a sense of how she might, those skills might translate into Ashland? You know, or how happy she might be in a place like Ashland? Did you get a sense whether this is a place where?
My sense was that she's ready to be a superintendent. I mean, this is definitely the next step. It was very clear to her and to her colleagues that she got, she finished her PhD, she's looking to be a superintendent. And I think this, I mean, I think she has the skills, certainly. And I think she's looking to make a community her own, you know, to just, that would be.
It's interesting, because the other towns that she's currently in the loop of looking at are all our size, very similar to us, and it seems to be that's what her focus is. Interesting comment we got from her superintendent was, you know, she's, you know, going through the list of all the things she's accomplished and had done in that district, said the only thing she doesn't have is, she doesn't have a superintendency. She's done everything so far.
She's done everything, yeah.
So, you know, not to look back and see, but from what we've seen, she's a much more accomplished assistant or deputy superintendent than any of the ones we've ever seen in our past lives, you know, from our interviews. So, and her being the only one who isn't a sitting super, she's pretty close to running a super role at this point, where she isn't, because the school, you know, there's so much for her to do.
Right, she, she did, that's, she did tell us she's very methodical about her next step. She is only in, you know, she's only applied to districts similar to ours. She's looking not.
So she really doesn't want to stay in an urban district? I mean, her goal is not really to stay in that urban district, she's looking for something new?
Yes.
Okay.
And the interesting thing about her something new is, somebody actually said that, oh, she's looking for her next adventure. When she got her doctorate, she went skydiving. She's, they said, they said, well, she said, well, that's what I'm gonna do, I'm going skydiving. You know, like they said, she's always just kind of looking for that next great adventure, so to speak. So it was interesting tone there, even though, as you all know, we've experienced everywhere we've gone, that people are, you know, sad to see these people go, because obviously they're all very good at what they do. But in Pittsfield, it was even a little more beyond that. There was like, kind of mad that the school committee wasn't doing something to keep her.
It's interesting, in Winchandon, it was like, you know, in essence, the teachers were resigned, that Brooke was gonna leave, and it was though the town, you know, the town only had a certain value on education, and I don't want to be negative, but they, this is what they thought was acceptable. And she could bring so much more, and her staff knew she was gonna go, and they were resigned to it in Pittsfield. They were angry because they liked her so much. Their superintendent's leaving also at the same time, and they want her, the staff want her to be superintendent, but they don't see, you know, between the city council and the school committee, they don't see that happening. And they were angry and mad about it.
And they were crying.
Yes, yes, we've experienced it all.
It's been an interesting week.
Week, yes.
Any other questions, Pope Barbara, from anybody?
I'm wondering if, did she have any, like, programs that she either initiated, or, you know, things that she put her stamp on?
Well, I think they were a little, for, like you said, Winchandon was sort of where we were with some of our programs. They were a little behind there, but her strength seemed to be bringing in curriculum and making sure the teachers had the professional development, and along that line. That really seemed to be the majority of stuff they talked about.
Well, I think the coaching is one example of one I have here. She also established these, the district climate teams, where they were looking at anti, their anti-bullying, and, you know, using their second step and all. This was somebody that was from the humanities department, and, so there are things ongoing. Let me see if I can find something else that she had her fingerprints on, as we say.
She had her fingerprints on everything.
On everything, yeah.
For the most part.
Well, you said the professional development was a real strength.
Yeah, and that was another thing, like I say, about the breadth of the people that we met. I just felt like, you know, she had the early childhood coordinator, she had the alternative school director, she had the special ed director. We had the people from the community, we had the people from the state, the DSAC people that are working with her in terms of bringing up their performance levels. We had the business manager, her business manager was there answering questions. I felt like we met, although we didn't meet students, we did meet a lot of people, Title I people.
And that's another common thread that we saw, at least on the three, you know, that I saw, rather than the main. Each of these candidates have links to DESI. I mean, they're well-regarded with the state, they're asked about what their districts are doing, their programs are doing. Dr. Malkus is doing some work, experimental work with the state. So not only are they accomplished in what they're doing locally, they've got links and contacts, which is obviously of a benefit too at some point, so. So they, all three were impressive from that standpoint also.
Yeah, and I think there was that personal touch, the same as we heard at the other, with all of the other people, that, you know, she contacted a family of a teacher who had taken sick just to check in and make sure, you know, things were okay. She had taken it upon herself when she was department chair to mentor new teachers in her department, so that they were up to snuff. And at one point, she was assistant superintendent, where she had the HR piece, it was what she was doing. And people that met her through that role felt that she was extremely professional, extremely helpful, always checked back in, made sure people had what they needed, so.
Oh, she seemed very efficient.
Did she have any role in contract negotiations?
She did not. We asked that question.
Did not, I asked that.
That was the one thing she hadn't done that was done out of the superintendent's office. And she had not, well, she had her role with the president of the union, but she admitted that her experience there wasn't quite what Brooke's experience was in Winchandon, so.
Although she had had one guy that was very reasonable. She said, you know, there was one person she worked with that was very reasonable, and then there are some that aren't, but, you know.
And she did have a background in, didn't she, wasn't she an HR person?
And then she'd actually been in HR.
And that one year, they hired her because, in a previous life, yes.
No, I don't mean even there, but in a different, so I mean, she has some.
So they gave her that role for years, the assistant in charge of personnel.
Yes, when Prop 2 and 1/2, is what she told us. It was hard to stay in education years ago, and so she actually left education for a period of time, maybe four or five years, and worked in HR. That's right, so.
All right, ready to move on? The next day, which was Wednesday, and we went to East Bridgewater. Remember to always say the east, and that was to see Susan Conti, who's their sitting superintendent. Who wants to start?
What was that, were we all there?
We were all there.
We were all there.
Well, you know, from, I think, East Bridgewater was an interesting visit also, because they are, is very similar to us in budget levels and total number of students, similar programs, although Ms. Cody seems to have her hands full, because she's essentially doing the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and director role, so sort of three, three in one, instead of just two in one, right? But, you know, similar vein in themes there, very well-respected by the teachers in the community. That's the one school, although I don't know if you saw in Maine, but we had a whole room of students that came in and talked to us about superintendent, and what they'd seen her do, and their relationships with her, and saw the school climate. These kids love school, too, and they talked about all the different things. That was, that was very interesting.
She had a big hand in the high school building project.
Yep, yep, she's, yeah, she's brought.
She's on the committee. She's on the community.
That, that building project to the town, which was very contentious over years. And she's been able to mend some fences and get that done. But similar programs. Certainly, it would seem as though she was a little more hands-on on a day-to-day basis. I mean, she had actually come in and changed the food service program when she came on board, went through a couple iterations of that to get effectively outsourced that to save some budget money, make that more effective and get better service.
Very familiar with curriculum, to the point where, you know, she was delivering it to people in different departments herself and organizing department meetings where she was presenting him with, them with the new curriculum. And they say that that really made all the difference for them and made their department run more smoothly and it really ended up benefiting the students, but she really knew her stuff, as far as curriculum does.
Right. Her bent was really understanding how modern or nowadays children learn and to the point where she's writing her doctorate on that and how to help kids absorb curriculum and understand what they need to learn better. It was a very interesting discussion. That was sort of her focus on teaching the whole child and making sure all the right elements are combined to develop that material.
Lots of support from everybody in her district. Again, we had the parent groups, we had the student groups, we had the town group. Lots of support from everybody there. And they were also very sorry to see her go.
Yeah. And very high energy, really, running so much of that district single-handedly.
Right. Lots of talk about her integrity, what you see is what you get, and that they felt that she was very direct and very upfront and willing to take the next step to get something done, is what I remember about her.
And it was interesting because I thought those folks were a little more forthright with us, because they talked about when Susan first came to the district and she wore it hard on her sleeve a little bit.
I was gonna say, they showed some growth, yeah.
She'd grown over the years. Had rarely tackled a tough town.
Right.
Been able to bring in the community there, which is a very blue-collar town with struggling with some of the budget issues. So it was, it was impressive. Certainly big into electronics, smart boards all around, you know, technology, very technology savvy, had, you know, very similar programs to ours with RTI and PBIS.
Creative with the budget cuts and how to, you know, utilize staff, remaining staff most effectively.
And good results. So I've been pulling some of the MCAS. They're, we have the best results, thank you.
Of course.
We're very impressed with that district. But East Bridgewater, very similar to us, so ahead of Pittsfield and Winchendon. Like I said, I'm trying to learn how to use the main systems, measurements, but haven't quite got that down.
Not working so far?
It's still working.
Still working.
Not quite there yet.
But very impressive results for what she has in the budget. And she has the lowest per, per pupil expenditures, just under $10,000, where, you know, $1,000 or $2,000 less per people than all the other districts we've seen. And the main numbers are much higher than all three, so. So it's interesting to look at, you know, what we saw there and what was presented in the rave she got from the community and the folks in the building and still be able to have these types of results, I thought was impressive.
One of the questions I had, and I'm curious of what you all thought, and I have a note in a couple places, extremely hands-on, and someone else said, which of course is, they were saying it as a good thing, and of course it is, but somebody else said, "I'm more comfortable speaking," it was a teacher, "I'm more comfortable speaking with her than the principal." I was a little concerned that, you know, that, and I think there's, there's an issue where she's certainly doesn't, you started off with it, Mark, that she's kind of filling all kinds of roles in that system. So it perhaps is, is a result of that. But, you know, we didn't hear a lot about the strategic plan. It's, it's sort of not done. The teacher evaluation was, has been put off until they, you know, I have a note, just barely started because they, you know, had to do contract. Now, I'm willing to wonder if that's just because things are, you know, she's just got so much in her hands. But I guess I wondered if anybody else had any thoughts about that.
Well, from that perspective, she certainly is around the district enough to where she knows everyone and folks are comfortable talking to her. I didn't get the impression that there's an issue with chain of command. I had asked Brooke in Winchendon for, because she had talked about her strategic plan, the iPod, right? And they had recently done a contract and I wanted to see some of the language in there. So I asked her for those documents when I was there. And because I asked her for those documents, I emailed the others for those too. And I know that there were some comments about the timing or some of the information that you just mentioned in East Bridgewater, but she sent me everything. So there's individual site plans that have the strategic goals for each of the schools, the teacher evaluation, but she did explain that because they were in a contract, difficult contract period, and they had to go to mediation, that they put that off till the end of the-
That's right.
-the contract, and then they were picking it up after that. So I didn't see those two points as being any significant drawback.
You were in a concern. No one was concerned. Anything else on Susan?
Another strong candidate, I thought.
This isn't gonna be easy.
I know, I know. It was a fun week, really.
Right. I'm looking now to the last, the last groups, because we did have the town officials come in. And they talked about her being a worker bee, knowledgeable, accessible, and honest. So, oh, and you know, she, this was the one, and I think they all kind of had something similar, where she brought the American International College to the district. Is that, have I got the right name?
Yeah, that was hers.
To rent, so they were getting the rent of the facilities, but it was also available for the teachers to, you know, do some of their training.
It is in Pittsfield, too.
And I think it's a lot of-
Dr. Melkis was using them also.
Of course, we had Wesley College, so I guess it's a fairly common. So is that, anything else on Susan before we move on, talk about our trip up to the Down East?
I know. I had, one, one other thing I thought was nice was one of the guidance people I have here had said how she, you know, again, I keep thinking of those bike meetings as Brooke calls them, but she had worked with them in developing their curriculum and what it was that they felt was important for guidance to be working on with the kids.
Okay. All right, so let's talk about Lebo, I believe is how it's pronounced, who is the superintendent for Mount Desert, is it Desert?
That's how they were pronouncing it.
That's how they were saying it.
Mount Desert Island, which is an interesting group. He is, just to give you a little perspective, he has 10 school committees to deal with, 10! They talk about he does meetings for the first two weeks of every month, solid, right after the other. So now, how easy do we look now?
Yeah, is this like a piece of cake or what?
So Laura, you want to start and tell us a little bit about your impressions?
Sure. Well, it started where, you know, after the six-hour ride, and we got to the hotel. And after I bonded with the owner of the hotel over his Mickey pin, we asked him if he knew the candidate, and he did. And he shared lots of positive feedback and had some stories about running into him in town. And then we went on to our next place to grab a bite to eat, and the waiter knew the candidate very well. And that gave us another opportunity to, you know, ask some more questions. And it just, that's the kind of place that Bar Harbor is. Most of the people that, I shouldn't say most, because I don't, I didn't really count, but many of the people that we met that day have known Mr. Lebo for 30 or 40 years. You know, some of them were, were his teacher, or they taught his kids, or one woman was his childbirth instructor. It's that kind of community where, although there are 10 districts and it's a complicated system, and what was remarkable about the day is that, you know, he's working with all these town managers, all these school committees, and just consistently had the respect and of everybody that we spoke to. We didn't hear a negative story about him. And of course, we had lots of positive information about all the candidates, but it was really remarkable in this district because it was so varied. They have islands, you know, students that take the boat into school and all these different little aspects, and they have a wide economic spectrum as well. And we felt that we had a chance to talk to lots of different people. And it was very consistent that his leadership was very strong. They had a lot of respect for him. Their district is in great shape. It felt like, you know, that was the only district that we visited where, you know, they might be doing a little bit better than we are and that he might be in a position to help us grow in the ways that we want to grow. There were all kinds of examples. He has a heart for struggling students. And I appreciated that. And he actually had real programs that he had started for those struggling students and that he personally involved himself in some of these things, took a bunch of students out on a navigation course. And another thing that we found out when we got there is that he built a, or he arranged for a building to be brought onto school property that housed, this is some special ed students.
It was an old hand. It's almost like the Learning Center, but it's-
Really like the at-risk, dropping out kids.
At-risk kids, yeah.
Right. And he sort of pulled that all together. It seemed like there were a lot of stories where he was thinking out of the box, you know, he was recognizing that there was a need. And he was being really creative about, in this case, I think he said somebody donated the building and, and then somebody donated bringing the building over to the property. And now that they can keep these students on property instead of, instead of sending them elsewhere. There were tears, that, you know, there were lots of mixed emotions. They're happy for him that he's moving on. They claimed that his theme for them was always family comes first. And he's making this move because of his family and, but it was bittersweet for a lot of the folks who were kind of choked up about it. Then I was a mess myself.
I know. We actually had one woman leave crying. Laurie was crying at one point. She goes, "I don't even know the man." It was just some of the stories that they came up with. He's definitely, has touched a lot of lives there. And he's done an incredible job and he clearly is able to sell what needs to be sold to those eight communities that he is responsible for. I mean, because he has to be able to articulate at each one, their budget before each one of their town meetings, before their, what they call their warrant committee, which is really the FinCom. And what I heard consistently over and over again, because at the very end, we had the community people, which was really entertaining, because I felt like I was back at Murder She Wrote episode with these little people from Maine and, you know, really, some of these weathered people, a couple of town managers, and this one lady that said she was very conservative with her tax dollars, but he always presented the budget in such a way that she felt she had to vote for those things. Like, how could you not do it for the kids, kind of thing? So, you know, that was one thing that kept coming back all day, that, you know, he's very intelligent and he really gets it, but he's also able to articulate it to anyone and really-
Does his homework first.
Take the time, yeah.
He would come with data.
Always comes prepared.
Be able to present it. And one of our meeting, that same town meeting that Kathy's talking about, the gentleman in the room, one of the gentlemen in the room was his staunch opponent in the big tax fight in town. And the gist of his thing was like, I totally disagree with him. I don't think that the money should be divided that way. But throughout the whole process, I just had great respect for him. The idea was that, you know, he's not a hothead, that he's very, researches his position, he backs it up. And if you disagree with him, he'll treat you respectfully, but he'll keep pushing forward with what he really believes. Student-centered, lots of, lots of examples of being student-centered. Special ed kid needed some help with chemistry, he started tutoring him. And staff just couldn't say enough about him. And they described a staff that is extremely committed and everybody's going over and above. And they described him as somebody who's able to bring out the best in everybody. And so people wanted to give them, him, their very best. That was impressive. But again, that he wasn't afraid to make the tough decisions when some, you know, something wasn't working out and he had to ask somebody to rethink their career.
Yeah, I think if I were to sum him up, I mean, I think he's all about management, but he's doing it through his people skills. I mean, people talked, and I won't go on, as Laurie has sort of told you, he clearly has, has touched people's hearts. And there were story after story of how he's done things. But the, the, sort of to get to his management stuff, people talked about how good he is at delegating, which, you know, again, was interesting to me, because I think we have a team in place and we've been very clear that, you know, we're looking for someone to come in and, and be the leader, but that his man, his, they talked about the good to great and driving the bus. And every time we had a new group in the room, it's clear, it wasn't just one person, it was everybody said, "Yeah." Because, because we would ask the question, "How can he do this in a new environment?" Well, it's all about getting the right people on the bus. And you'd be like, "Oh, it's the bus again." And then somebody'd talk about his tattered copy of the book and how he used it to, to motivate people. So he clearly, I was really impressed with what I thought were his leadership skills, the way that came through so consistently. And there was a couple of other places where there were things that he talked about. He talked a lot about the culture. Well, he did, he toured the high school with us, but then culture came through over and over again. And that culture was, was everything to that district. Building a culture was so, so important to him. And he, he talked about students. It was, what was interesting to me about that site visit that I think I can distinguish from the others, and I think why it stuck with me some more, is because everybody who said something had something very specific. And I'll give you this example. Everybody talked about listening to students. And I totally respect that everybody did. This is not, one of the teachers said something interesting. He said, "When we meet with students, we always make sure that the students in the room speak first, because we're afraid if the teachers speak, then the students are gonna be afraid to say something contrary to what they've just heard their teacher say." And I thought, well, there's a common sense thing that wouldn't have occurred to me. Perhaps it's occurred to everyone else, but for me, it was an example of something very concrete that's been put in place to respect the culture. The art teacher talked about, when he, when he came to the high school, well, a couple things. One was that the principal's office was in the back. This is an interesting, they have, they have a high school that's very differently configured, but he moved and he took someone's office and he put his offices in the hallway. So he's just constantly visible. It was just one, it was just a kind of his way of saying, "I want to be right out there." And then said to the teachers, "Where's the artwork?" And the teacher said, "It wasn't like, ooh." He said it was distinguished by, "I'm not, I'm not giving you permission to put artwork in the hall. It's like, I need artwork." And, and so, again, that was, that's going back to the culture.
Well, and the students affirmed that he gives them a voice. I mean, they have a opportunity to evaluate teachers, the students. And we had many teachers in the room that told us, maybe at first they weren't too thrilled about the idea, but that they've really learned a lot from these students. And that the students made some comments that gave them an opportunity to grow before it got to the point where they were having a talk with their administrator. So that's kind of a-
Students and parents.
Students and parents.
Wade in on those evaluations.
Right.
And it was never about bashing. I think that was always, you know, when you hear about parent input to a teacher evaluation, I think there's always a fear that it would be that, you know, oh, an opportunity for parents to say negative things. And it was just, the culture is really established there that, that is absolutely not what happens. People give constructive criticism and then they point out the good things. And it's, it's all very, done very respectfully, very positively, building, you know, that relationship and wanting people to bring out the best in people. It's not done at all to, to bring anyone down. And it's just not even approached that way. Nobody talked about any fear about-
Right. And it comes back to the voice that he gives the students, because he said a lot throughout the day and it came out a lot throughout the day, that he expects the students to have a certain ownership over their building, over their academic careers, over their behavior. And he provides them the tools to do that. And I don't, and again, everybody that we met was very student-centered, but this is the first place where we saw sort of specific examples of that. And we had, did have students in the room and they were giving us concrete examples, a young man having an opportunity to work some things out with his basketball coach in a way that left the whole community feeling satisfied at the end. So that was, that was remarkable about that particular visit.
Did you get a feel for the size of the district? Or budget-wise? Because I have some numbers here.
His high school is 500 kids.
500 students.
And then he's got these eight districts. And some of them have like 12 kids.
All right.
So, I mean, some of them are tiny.
So if you look at the information I found on the main Department of Education, that would be consistent with the secondary school information.
So his secondary school is the high school, the regional high school, but there- So, his secondary school is the high school, the regional high school, but they're organized as an AOS, which is, remember what that's...
AOS 91.
Yeah, and I forget, we learned what that acronym, oh, actually, here it is.
So they, it looks as though around those numbers...
Alternative organizational structure.
Their per pupil expenditure is about 14.3 versus ours at 11.5. And if we looked at East Bridgewater, similar to us, 10,000, and Winchenden, 11. And then at the elementary level, which is that grouping, they actually have a per pupil expenditure of 16.3. So significant money involved in that program with what is, you know, a lot less students in total, too. The other thing that, and the reason I ask these questions is sort of along that discussion of culture.
Right.
I mean, there virtually no diversity in the program. It's in that, you know, they're up in Maine. Do you see that ability to keep that small community able to do some of these things that they're doing, and the money that they have, able to do some of these things that they're doing versus being able to bring that to our community?
That was the question that I continually tried to find a way to ask. I'll tell you some of the answers I got for that. I just thought I saw, some of the schools, when you say there's no diversity, there absolutely is. And what people talked about a lot is that the community is sort of, you've got your more well-to-do folks, and then you've got your folks that are fishing.
Well, they have some economic diversity. I agree.
They have economic diversity. Some of the schools have a 57% free and reduced lunch population. So there is that economic diversity, and there was a lot of talk about how he dealt with that. There was the talk, I asked about sort of, what about bringing in, you know, doing it in a new place or whatever, and they talked a lot about the new school district that he had just brought on board, and the way he had approached that, and doing his homework, and going out, because basically they brought another town from the mainland. So it was more, it's not the wealthy town. This is one of the, I think, the less affluent towns from the mainland that was brought in to be part of this AOS. And that only happened within the last year or so. I mean, they're in the midst of that.
What was the name of that town?
Trenton.
Trenton. And he'd already made some changes already in the administration, and the teachers were there from Trenton and were very positive about the changes.
So, here's my notes about it. He went into the Trenton administration. He arranged for a pre-evaluation, then a second evaluation. These are my notes. Oh, never mind, this was about, this was about an individual.
I do remember one of the responses. I mean, I can tell you what the response was, Mark, from one of the staff members when we asked a question like that. He said that this gentleman, Mr. Lebo, would never come to your district without researching everything about it, understanding who the population was, watching films on TV, whatever he could get his hands on about how the different folks in town interacted. That was the answer, is that he's going to know who you are.
Yeah, and I'm sure he's as intelligent, as qualified as the other candidates. I'm just looking at the difference in the district. If you look at Trenton in the chat here, this is another district that has a per capita expenditure of over 16,000. That's a third more than what we do. So, what are the abilities?
Yeah, and I don't know what the difference is in those numbers. I don't know when you're getting into those small numbers, whether you get the economy to scale, whether they're able to, do you know what I'm saying?
Well, to some extent, it's because you have a quarter of the number of kids.
Right. So I just, I agree with you. The districts are completely different, and I think the million-dollar question is, can he do there, here?
None of the classrooms that we looked into had more than 15 students in them.
Right. It's absolutely...
He toured the high school. And each one of those districts, and we're calling them districts, those are their elementary schools.
Right.
K to eight.
K to eight, and that's a district. And there's four of them on Bar Harbor, the island, and then there's the Trenton, and then there's three more out on outer islands.
And then nine to 12. So if you look at...
And then the nine to 12 is regional.
That's how it's all set up. You can look at those schools.
Right. And even those towns pay different, which is what George's problem was.
Right, that was the whole taxing thing.
George was the gentleman that came, cute little, you know, everybody needs a George, really, right, to stand up at town meeting and argue it out. And he was very respectful and really had a lot of good things to say about Rob. But in the meantime, you know, he brought his numbers and told us, you know, how one district would pay what they would pay, and the other district paid half of that per pupil, because it was on the property valuation, and that's how they determined it. And they have, what did he say? It was a town of 2,000, and they were worth 2 billion, you know, Mont Desert, because it just, between the main coastline being...
Right, with an affluent coastal community.
Rockefeller's and Martha Stewart.
Yeah, Martha Stewart.
So it absolutely is...
It's different. He did, he told us that.
I mean, as we're coming to, now we've sort of gone through all four candidates, I will tell you that, and I saw three of the four, and so I think we have four potentially strong superintendents. And what I'm waiting to see, and now I'm finding out that I probably won't see it, I was really hoping to get to a place where I could sort of watch them in action with our administrative team, because I think that's where the proof is going to be. How do they fit here?
Right.
And I think maybe this is a segue into where we go from here as a committee, because we're going to need to make a decision. A week from tonight, we're scheduled to make a decision, and I certainly...
We should talk about that, too, I think.
Well, that's part of what we're going to be doing. If everybody's finished sort of going through the candidates, anybody, anything else?
Do you have any questions, Pat? Did you get a good sense of who's who and what's what?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you want to talk, I have copious notes on everybody.
Yeah, I would recommend you talk to everybody so that you get a chance to be up to date. Because, you know, I think there's probably more that we could all say, but, you know. So going forward, we were scheduled tomorrow to start with our first visit to Ashland. Tomorrow, we see Dr. Malkus. And where did I, here's the schedule. So she'll be here at 8:00 at Central Office, scheduled to meet with Central Office staff, meet with administrators. Then she goes to the high school, the Warren Middle School, then lunch. How many of us are going to be able to do lunch with?
I'll be there.
Anybody else?
I'm planning on being there.
All right, so the four of us will be there for the lunch tomorrow. And then she goes to the Mendez, then the Pittaway, then she gets some downtime, and our reception is at 6:00, and our interview at 7:00. So we need to come up with interview questions, and I think we need to come up with a protocol. I'm going to turn to Mr. Gilbert right now because he's here from MASC, our search consultant. And before the meeting, you were talking about this site visit. Can you remind us of all what you have in mind with this candidate coming in and who you think should be in the room for the various?
I think for the candidate, this is a similar opportunity to what you had going to their district. They're going to come in here, and they're going to get to spend some time with small groups of people to see the buildings, to see what's going on in your buildings, and again, to see, as you're looking, they're also looking to see how are they going to fit here. I think, you know, if a school committee member can spend a day and go around with a candidate, that can be helpful for both the candidate and the committee. But we also recognize that you also have lives and you have jobs, and sometimes that's not possible. So generally, what we say is either a school committee member or an administrator take the candidate around.
Okay.
I think there's an opportunity also maybe for you to see some of that interaction, at least with community members, as part of that reception, because generally, that reception is sort of free-flow, meet and greet. It's not structured. It should be conversational. And, you know, your administrators certainly are welcome to participate with community members as well in sort of having conversations with the candidate during that timeframe. So that, you know, maybe part of this is to reach out to your administrators to say, you know, please feel free to come and interact with the candidate in that way.
I sure hope they're coming. We've done that, right? That's good.
Okay. And I also think, again, you know, your interviews are in public, so having said to your administrators and your staff, we're interviewing these candidates in public, feel free to come and watch, is another way in which to also, because you're right, there are people there who are very, very interested in seeing who their next boss is going to be. So their interaction, their feedback to you may well be important, too.
So let's talk about that feedback. What do you recommend in terms of feedback? How are we to get feedback on people who meet the candidates?
I think that, you know, people who, people who have something to say to you are going to, they're going to find a way to do that, whether it's via email or, you know, obviously that last candidate, you don't necessarily have the opportunity there because you're going to try to make the decision that night. But I also think that you need to be cautious about how you take that feedback in, because as a body, you're seeing a whole lot of information. You have all the paper information. You've gone and seen them in the environment they're working in. You're hopefully going to see them in the environment here in Ashland, at least in some form, and you have the interview that you're conducting. So you have a whole body of information, and the feedback you're getting is focused either from the search committee on the one hour that they spent with them, or on those, you know, again, those minutia moments that people get to spend with them or watching the interview. So be careful about the, you know, recognizing that you put all that feedback in context as you think about your decision.
Okay, thank you. So proceedings. Mark, you'd said you wanted to talk about the timing on that one-day decision. Let's start with that.
Yeah, well, I have a few questions on the flow. I actually will be available all next week, and I'm happy to escort, or if you don't mind me being around, be around if I don't need to escort, because I think that's important, to see them interact at all the different levels. Couple things on the schedule. First, around the reception, we expect the candidate's going to come and say, hi, so-and-so, this is my background, et cetera. Any questions at the reception, or just?
I think it's more conversation. Yeah, it's work in the room.
I think it's work in the room.
So...
And why is that? Because I know in the past, it hasn't been like that.
Well, that's where I was going to go, and I'll...
I think it's an opportunity for the community to have some interaction with the finalists. They've had input into the process, but they really haven't had an opportunity to interact with people.
Well, that's okay. If we had a reception, and we've got two hours downtime, and then we have however long we're going to take at 7:00, you know, can we expand the reception to be an hour? The candidate can come in and give a five, 10-minute opening? We have people sitting around in a circle, and they can answer questions, because then everybody is, they answer some of the questions that the community would have.
Sure.
Versus he might, he or she might talk to six or seven people and be monopolized and talk, and not everybody gets the picture.
Yeah, and again, I think that also depends on how many people are going to show up.
Well, yeah.
And that's, you know, that's oftentimes, if you play it by ear, then if you have five or six people show up, then maybe the, just sort of interaction may be appropriate. But yeah, if you've got 20 people, then you've got to be, and I will be here at the beginning of that to make sure and to sort of guide that process, too, so that if there is a room full of people, then we can put a little more structure around.
No, I think that'd be good. Because otherwise, you're going to look, you're going to end up having folks coming to the school committee meeting, and then that's going to get a little, I'd be nervous that that would get a little unwieldy to manage with us trying to ask questions, people raising their hand, all trying to get clarification.
Yeah, no, when you do your interview, that's between you and the candidate, and that's it, so.
Well, and I like the structure idea, but shouldn't they have a little bit of a heads-up so they know if they're going to be answering questions a little bit more publicly?
I will. I will speak to them.
Definitely do that.
Yeah, okay, just so we're not, you know, at the last minute saying, okay, sit down and...
And I do like the idea of it being, I mean, I think if we can make it an hour, given that we're all in the same room, there's no travel time.
Yep.
So if we can take, split it up a little bit, maybe do a half an hour of, I don't know what the timeframe is, but a half an hour of something a little more structured, and then let them have a little bit, does that feel all right to people? I mean, we can obviously play it by ear. If there's a ton of people and the questions...
Well, I think, yeah, like Mike says, we'll play it by ear with the number of folks that show up and make it as comfortable as possible.
Because I do like the idea of the casual stuff, too. I think that's a different take. But I want to go back to, because now you're available, and I was going to try to be available. What's the downside of, and maybe it's just for selected times, but if some of the school committee members sort of, and I wouldn't want to interact, and are you thinking, I wouldn't want to interact. I would want to be a fly on the wall and sitting in the back of the room. How do you, do you think there's a downside to that?
I think there can be. You know, I think you bring the candidate around, and you may have conversations with the candidate in between, but you don't want to be, you know, you don't want to be in the room.
Okay.
Because, again, they won't get authentic interaction if people are watching you watch them.
Okay. Really? Okay.
So how do we get a feel for how they're interacting if we're not watching them interact?
We get the feedback after.
I think you get the feedback after, yeah.
But that's the feedback that we're not going to take.
Well, some of it will come, some of it will come from the candidate. And again, I think you take that feedback, but you take it in context. That's all.
And we will be there at the lunch, which is with the town officials, which will be kind of interesting.
And the reception and the interview.
Do you have a sense of whether anybody is going to be able to make it?
We've had no response from any of the town officials.
There you go.
I take that back. I remember the finance committee said he could not make luncheon but would be at the receptions.
Okay.
And I didn't know how many of you were coming.
I responded to Karen.
I responded to Karen.
I can come every day but Thursday.
I didn't respond, but I'm just going to show up. I'm not going to eat. You know, I've had enough of my, had my share of prepared lunches and wraps and sodas. So, I mean, I'm going to come, but I'll bring my, that's very nice. But I didn't want to throw it off. I actually have to work at least one day, so I probably won't make it, but we'll see.
Okay. So are we clear on how that's going to go with the visits? And then when the school committee interview starts, we're going to start with an opening statement and a closing statement, and interviews. Okay, that was, okay. So we are doing, they will do a closing statement, and they're going to become prepared to do that. All right. So, did you think about 10 questions? I recall that you thought we could each answer...
I think at least two, you know, go around the table twice.
Okay. So I'm going to pass these out.
And obviously, you know, people may have follow-up questions. You've got your notes. You've said some things tonight. I heard a couple of you say some things that you had some concerns. So structuring some of your questions around those concerns may also prompt follow-ups from other members as well. So, you know, I think that's a way in which you, you may end up with more than 10 questions, but you'll have 10 sort of prepared questions, and, you know, you may have a couple more that are follow-ups to the answers.
Okay. Okay. So what I'd asked everybody to do was to put together some questions so we'd have something in front of us. We have 16, so we got, four of us have sent in questions. And the reason I wanted to do this, because I need to see things visually. So take a minute, let's read them and see if we can group them, because we're not going to be able to use all of these, obviously.
current structure, so we can eliminate...
I thought 10 and 11 are actually both similar to, I had put 11. Do you think 11, too?
I hadn't gotten to 11 yet.
I'm sorry.
But maybe 10 and 11 are similar to one, and we can get...
Well, I think we need a question. What I'm seeing in each of those, and then in number one of the small piece, seems to be, what do you know about Ashland?
Right.
And how does that fit?
There are three or four questions that are asking that in a different way.
Yeah.
Why Ashland?
Right, why Ashland? What do you have for Ashland, right? Is that what people are...
Well, 10 and 11... Well, 10 and 11 are different, because 10 is about what they see in the administrative structure versus what they have in theirs, and what could they bring to this district?
Community.
Because that, you know, they're the superintendents, so the administration is important. 11 is the whole community piece with, you know, how do you understand this community, and the support you'll get versus your current district and the support you get, and how would you address anything you see in a plus or a negative? So they are very different.
Versus admin.
One is, one is similar, but it's, it's, in my view, a little generic. Yeah, I, I guess that's sort of my concern, or not concern, but that's sort of what I'm trying to understand about the interview. We've had the, the, the search committee ask the generic questions where you get the generic answers. We've gone and seen these folks and been able to ask them detailed questions. Now there's closing the gap on some of those detailed questions. And I don't, I don't expect that all four candidates are gonna get the same questions. They should be getting questions that are targeted to what we still need to feel out from them and understand how they're gonna fit in this district.
So you wanna, you wanna develop different ones, or are you just talking the follow-up, as Mike was saying? I think we need to be somewhat, I, I, I don't think it would work if we do something completely different for all four. I don't, I, I think we do need to tailor follow-up questions, but don't you agree that we need to do something uniform for all four?
No, I don't.
No, you don't. So you wanna do everything completely unique?
Well, I, I think we know what our concerns are, and I wrote my four questions based on those concerns, because I think they're all intelligent, they've all brought programs to their district. I, I don't see any functional gaps. I'm more concerned about how they're gonna be able to manage with our administration, how they're gonna be able to deal with our community. Truly, you know, as you said earlier, we have an excellent administrative team. We're looking for someone that's gonna come in and lead our district now in a different format than perhaps we've had in the past, so. That's, that's how I structured the four questions I wrote.
So let's do this a different way than I was thinking, maybe, maybe what we need to do is really think about categories of questions. And then, Mark, if you have, you know, two, what are the, what are the categories of questions that you are most concerned about? Or is that, you can't do that because you want something for different?
Well, no, I mean, when I thought about the four questions.
Yes.
You know, certainly, a priority is how you manage budget, based on coming here versus what you're used to, how you're gonna deal with your administration, based on what you're used to and what you've seen in your visit here, how you're gonna deal with the community, based on what you're used to and what you've seen here. And then I had one open question, based on what I see during the day, if I can see stuff during the day. That's, that was my format.
Okay, so one budget, one administration, and one community, really, I mean, category, right?
Right, and if you, if you read the list, like, most, most of us are asking the same questions, but in a different way.
Right, right, and many of them.
It's just a matter of narrowing it down, getting rid of the extra, and deciding which way we want to ask the question.
Well, I think, for instance, I think the one that is number three on the small piece, the small percentage of students. See, this is where I would, I'm gonna disagree with, with, not disagree, Mark, but say, say that we can go in a slightly different direction. I was not in on those first, you said they've all been through the generic interviews, but I wasn't. I never heard their answers to some of these, so I do still have, um, I still have some very basic, in fact, we don't even know what questions were asked in those interviews, do we?
Well, we do, he, he sent the list.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't see that, all right.
Yeah, we have the list.
Or if I saw it.
But we don't know the answers, but we know the questions.
So, so I still have a lingering, so I'll, I'll go to one of mine, which is, you know, the business of, you know, how do you, how will you improve the overall quality of staff, right? That's, that, that for me, dealing with staff who are underperforming, and really, the same token is, if you've got some exemplary staff, how are we keeping them? How are we moderating them?
So number four, you're talking about.
Number four.
Yeah.
That is a piece that I.
I think it's a good question, and I think it deals with that whole accountability piece that we always concern about.
So that's the accountability, maybe that's what we can do, is grab these, you know, for accountability, and, and anyway, this one about special ed, the, the struggling students, I kind of got off when I started saying that. I think that's a question we haven't heard anybody answer, even if they answered it in, in a previous interview. So I'd like to hear that.
I like that question.
Okay.
This small.
Yeah, sorry, I, I, silly me, I just made these real quick.
Number three on that small paper, Barbara.
Print a bunch of them, but I was rushing, so.
And I think, and I just need to take a look at this again, but.
Yeah.
I think, one, now that you've spent time in Ashland, what qualities do you bring? That question is the same as, based on your impressions of our community's interaction, what do you believe you can incorporate? And it's also kind of asked in, what have you learned about Ashland? You know, what, there's like four places where we're all kind of asking the same thing. So it's just a matter of picking one of them.
Pick one.
Or coming up with one that we craft together and getting rid of.
I just suggest that we make sure that we ask the question specifically, so we get specific answers. Because of, you know, we've had a lot of, okay, I mean, they're questions, and you get the answer, but when all three candidates ask, answer that question the same way, you get, you don't get anything out of it.
Well. The only other caution I would say there is, you need to be careful about how you ask these questions. You don't want to be so specific that you're giving them the answer.
No, no, right, no, I, I agree.
Right, like the open-ended, let them see, and different, you know.
You know what you're listening for. If they don't give you what they're, what you're listening for, then they haven't really answered the question.
So here's one of the, so my first, the first question, Mark, which was mine, that you said was generic. When I said, from your knowledge of Ashland, tell us three ways that we differ, what I was looking for there is, one, how much research have they done? What do, what, how much work have they done to know about Ashland? So it was tell us up to three ways, and I was being very, that was specific, because I don't want them to just say, you know, something, I want, what, what can you tell us? And then how you would accommodate your style to those differences, I think, I feel like that is a big concern for me with at least two or three of the candidates, is like, will they fit here, so.
But I would favor in asking something like that in a more general way, because then they get all freaked out about, did I get three, did I list, you know?
Oh.
Just asking, the question is fine in terms of, you know, what are you bringing, and what do you see the needs are? You know, I think the subject matter is perfect, but if they have to start remembering, well, what is she asking? How many do I need to list? Did I list them all? Then things get lost. That's, like, it's not, I don't think it's a test where they have to.
Well, one of the things that I think, Mike, did you give them the questions written? Of course, that kind of ties our hands, you took the first one.
And, yeah, I did, because again, it's, that was the same set of questions were being asked to every candidate.
Okay.
So, yeah, they had it in front of them.
Right.
And a couple of those questions, you'll notice, are.
Pretty long.
Pretty long and multi-part, so it's.
Right, because you're right, I'm not trying to confuse them to try to, you know, do the.
Well, I think you get the same answer if you ask it in a very brief manner and let them talk. And maybe they'll give us three examples, maybe they'll give us five, maybe they'll give us one, and maybe that in and of itself is something.
Tell us how Ashland differs from your current district.
Right, and one candidate might give us three ways, and somebody else might give us eight ways, and somebody else might give us one, and that in and of itself can be telling, rather than structuring. That's just my.
I just, I'm hoping that they'll be specific, and that we, but again, I suppose if they're not, that, that's what worries me from having done this before, is that, it's, I'm actually saying the same thing you are, Mark, and we just have a different theory about how to get to it. I do not want to come out of these interviews with all the generic answers that don't, you know, that don't tell me. So, okay.
Don't you think you can tell by the response if people have done their homework, or not?
It isn't that I can't tell, but then I'm not sure, I'm not sure everybody hears the same thing. I want, it, that's, I want it to be clear enough, we'll, we'll all be able to tell, but it's, it, I don't know, I, I feel like.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, yeah.
Sometimes I think I've heard an answer, and the person next to me heard something totally different, so I'm really hoping that, that we can drill down as close as.
That's gonna happen, no matter how you ask the question.
That's right, that's right.
There's like a whole science on that.
Absolutely, right, right, of course.
Well, I mean, we've got all asked two questions.
Just ask her two?
Yeah.
But then, and not, and not worry that they overlap?
And if, you know, your question sounds similar to one you had before, you can tailor it towards what you did or didn't get from that prior answer.
Yep.
Okay. Pat, did you have anything you were thinking of asking? I didn't.
No, because when, the only response that I saw was Mark's response today to the questions, and I felt, I was almost gonna send back an email, but I felt that this kind of covers the different areas that I'd be concerned about, and it's very specific and simple, the question. Because I don't, I really don't go for long questions with several parts, because I want to see what they have to offer, so.
I think we all want the same information, though.
Oh, yeah, right, we all want the same information. All right, so, so then, why don't we just go back, and we'll, we'll come in with our, each with our two questions, and we'll, we'll just show up at the meeting, we won't try to organize it tonight. Does that work for everybody?
Well, I think you could use this sheet and work off the sheet, the sheet is.
Agree to the questions that we want, myself, I don't know, I think.
Well, just because if someone asks your two questions, and then it's your turn, and.
Well, we have like, we already have five circled on my sheet, anyway, because we think number four is good, nine, 10, 11, three on the little page. I think number one is good, myself, but if people feel that the three-way is too specific, maybe we just take that part out, and say, from your knowledge of Ashland, tell us ways that Ashland differs from your current, just take out the specific, if that's what people think, but I think it's a good question, I think it gets to that fit question.
Absolutely.
That others had on our list as well, it's just.
But just remember, on all your questions, you want to make sure that they tell you what they're bringing. It's easy to say, we look like this and they look like that, but there are differences. What, how are they gonna bring something based on their experience that are gonna help?
Well, I was, that was to accommodate your style.
Right, that's, yeah, that's fair.
That's the part, that's the part I would be looking to hear, so.
So question number one, but the second part of it.
Yeah, just shorter, everybody wants it shorter, I heard that.
Oh, no, I'm just making sure I understood correctly.
So, what, what else have we got, though?
So we're at six, can I agree to four more, and then we're.
Well, do we have a question about climate? I see number two on the small pages about climate. Do we want to ask a question?
I think so.
I guess, I, I think that's a good question, and we certainly heard climate described different ways in the different districts. So I, I think climate, I mean, to us is, we run PBIS, that, you know, there's, there's that interaction. I, I think we just need to make sure we know what we want to get from a question like that, because that's kind of, that can mean different things to different people. And if you hear an answer about climate from, for Clancy, that might be very different from climate from Mr. Leiber. And then you're gonna be going, so we, if, if you, if you go to that type of question, just like Larvy says, you gotta phrase it so you're gonna get the answer you're looking for, versus a confusing answer, you know what I mean?
I'm not sure, and this, this asks, what, what is it the superintendent does to set the tone? That's the question, so, which is.
Set the tone, climate.
It doesn't ask, it doesn't ask what the tone is. I, I feel like, having met with all of these candidates, we know what tone they would want to set. I don't know, that's the two ways to ask it, is what is the proper tone versus, you know, what will you do to set it? Do we need both of those?
I, I would, what I did when I wrote my questions was answer them. That's a good test to understand if you think you're gonna get something that's gonna be of value, that, that's all I, I mean, if you ask me what I said, well, I make sure that my teachers understand what our core values are, blah, 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 and then you get a blah, 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 blah re-answer, is that gonna help? That's, that's sort of my point, you know, if, if.
I mean, I think, I think you could, you could argue they could blah, blah, any question, that's, if that's what they're gonna do.
Do you have a better way of phrasing something about climate, or?
I don't know, I think we saw the climate, and we're all impressed that they all run a good climate. That doesn't happen without someone at the top making sure that happens, so I think that, in my view, is a waste of five minutes. And I don't mean that negatively, I just think we already know the answer. But if you want to ask, ask it again, that's fine, well, I'm not saying you shouldn't ask it, I'm just trying to find ways to get questions that are gonna give us information, that are gonna help us make a decision. We have four very good candidates, how are we gonna differentiate them? And if you set them up to answer sort of softball-like questions, we're gonna end up at the end of the four nights going. That's, that's what I'm worried about, and that's sort of.
See, I could see where, where a climate question could, could, I mean, and I'm not arguing for that particular one, I guess.
I, I think any question on the sheet is, any question you want to ask is fine. I'm, I'm just saying, from my experience, you just want to make sure, in a, in a, in what I see as a race that's so very close, that you're gonna get material that's gonna help us make a decision.
And not to argue, but, but, but for instance, the question where we say, what do you think your particular skills would add to the current process, I, I could see where they could also just, that could be a softball question. I'm, you know, I mean, they, and I, and I get what you're trying to get, and how are you, you're pretty sure that they're gonna be, like, say what, that, what, what is, what are you looking for, for that, that would, because I'm really trying to figure out. I, I agree with you about what we're trying, what we're trying to do, so how is that question gonna get them?
Which question?
I'm just looking at number nine, right? What do you think your particular skills would add to the current process? How is that not a, not a softball question, where they can say, well, I, you know, I've been doing budgets for years, and I've, you know, I know.
Well, they're not, you know, do you do the budget? Do you work with your business manager, director of finance? What, what is that interaction, how, what, what is that for? I mean, we all know how it works here, and it works pretty good. If the superintendent's gonna say, well, I do the budget in my office, and I let everybody look at it and decide if there's any issues with it, I'd probably have a problem with that answer.
I guess, okay, I guess I'm assuming nobody's gonna say that, I'm, okay.
I don't know.
I think the other thing we have to be careful about here is how you're gonna phrase these questions, too, because I, I can see somebody answering that question by saying, well, I need to be here and, and, and really see the details of how it operates before I make any changes. And, you know, that's not really giving you a whole answer.
And doesn't everybody, doesn't everybody talk about budgets and working as a team and building it? I feel like everybody could give the right answer to that, and I may be wrong. If, you're right, if somebody says they sit in their office and do the budget, that's a problem, and I guess I'm guessing.
So far, we haven't heard that.
We haven't, we haven't heard that, so. I, I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just making my point that I think they can dodge any question that they want.
They can, but you have to, you, you also have to be able to recognize that, too.
Yes, and we, that's what we're listening for.
And A, follow up, and B, be able to sit back and say, aha, they didn't really answer the question.
Right.
On to the next one.
Good point, okay, okay.
Right, that's, that's an informative answer, in and of itself.
Yes.
About, you know, a non-answer or a bad answer.
So, so what about, like, now, the vision piece? That's the one I don't see anywhere, and I like, I'm looking at, say, number six.
Number six.
Which is top priorities for staff, or, seven, two, staff, students, whatever. Is that where we get the vis, do we want to ask a vision piece for this? And if so, do people see a vision question here that we can make sure we pick?
Yeah, and those were my questions, and I was thinking, when I asked them, well, the first one, number five, I was thinking, what have you learned about Ashland that you didn't know before? I, I was looking for, you know, how invested are you in coming to Ashland? What have you learned about our community? Have you figured out anything about what might need attention? And give them an opportunity to say how they could be of value. So that's, that's where I was getting at with that, but with the other ones, same, same thing, in, in another way, what are your top priorities for Ashland students? I was looking for an answer that might show me that they know something about what Ashland students, I mean, I understand they've only come to one interview and whatever, but, you know, have they gone on our website? Have they asked the right questions during the day with our teachers and administrators? So I was trying to elicit, you know, what do you know about us? And what makes you good fit for us, right?
I think that's fair.
Maybe that's a better way to ask it.
Yeah.
What do you know about us?
No, straight up, look, you know, what have you done, what, what have you found out?
What have you learned, what have you learned about Ashland in the time you've spent here?
What were you able to answer today for yourself?
That's important to me, because I think it shows a level of.
I think it's important to all of us.
Chase right at them, instead of, because you're sort of beating around the bush, just say.
Beating around the bush with my five-word question?
No, no, you have four of them, that, you're trying to get that opinion, so.
I hear what you're saying.
So, so that kind of changes it to be more of a, which I think is great, actually. I mean, as you know, I was trying to get the same thing, so what do you know?
That's what I'm saying, a lot of us really want the same information.
We want similar stuff, but what I liked about yours is that I, I feel as if it's a vision piece. So if you decide to change it to go more at it, then I would like to still have somewhere in there. That's where I was looking at, you know?
Put it in, I mean.
I mean, that was my number two, which is what's different, you know, we, you know, we always ask the question, where will you be in five years? I'm not so much interested, I want to know where, where our schools will be, it's what is it, you know?
Maybe you want to take our vision statement and read it, and say, this is our vision statement. What does that mean to you? And is that in line with what you're doing now, what you think is the best for kids? I mean, it's hard to, one of the things that's difficult is, like you say, how do you ask someone about a place that they don't know, and they might, how do you say, what do you think the administration would be doing? Maybe they're doing it already, or maybe they aren't.
Yeah, and it's a trick question, because you don't want them coming in and saying, I'm gonna change everything. to change everything."
Right. Exactly. I think the, "Where do you think this district will be in five years?" is a good, is a good vision question. They're going to have to envision what...
What's their mark that they're going to lead?
And they're going to have to know something about what's already here to be able to say that.
Right. And it really depends on what you're looking for. Are you looking to hold them to whatever they answer their question? Or you're looking, I was more interested in, "What do you know about us?" You know? And give an answer that shows me that you understand this community. And as far as whether or not that's your real vision, and in five years, we're going to be able to say that you've met every comment that you made at your interview, you know, it's two different things. You can ask a question and you're looking for different, trying to see different things in their answer.
I know. Absolutely. I think we all were kind of... So here's a question I have. So, and Mark, you alluded to it with one candidate who's coming from a district with a lot more money. We have other candidates coming from districts maybe with less money or less resources and sort of, how are they going to fit here? I don't know. Have we asked that in terms of, like, I mean, the one candidate, it's like, can you, can you do what you want to do with less monies? But I don't know how you adapt that question for everybody.
Why don't you do it, Mark's suggestion, and ask it directly? Can you do what you want to do with less money?
But that's not going to be an appropriate question for all four candidates, is it?
Right.
No. I think there's got to be one or two questions that are specifically answering our concerns about the candidates that are still open and what we've talked about tonight. And otherwise...
Well, we could...
How do we get to the final night with that question?
How do you feel about, like, one question for each candidate that's sort of specific to that?
I don't have a problem with it. I think that's, I think it's appropriate.
I'm looking to you to... So do you, does this committee feel like we could come up with sort of, like, for each candidate, what is the sort of single thing that we want to, I mean, and not, not to take away from follow-up questions or going where the interview takes us, but just to go into the interview with a single thing that we want to focus on for that individual?
For me, it would be where I have concerns. You know, I don't want to make something up for everybody if I'm not concerned about. That's a concern I think that we all have, you know, in that case. And we, maybe there have been some other themes. So maybe we just write that question for that individual if we have a question for that individual.
Well, for instance, my question, which I know it doesn't sound like it was shared, but I did have that question for an individual in terms of, I didn't hear as much strategic thinking as I would have liked. I felt, I felt like all I heard about was the day-to-day stuff. And I understand that it might be because of the unique situation in that district.
So I think that would be an appropriate question.
So that would be for me.
That's an appropriate question. And I guess the other thing I say is, if it's going to be light at lunch in attendance, maybe that's where we can actually have those discussions. Because that is going to be a question that, you know, if you start saying, "You're missing something," then that's going to not just be a quick answer. That could be some, on, a little bit of discussion around that to make sure that they feel like they answered the question and we make sure we follow up on it. So maybe lunch is a better place to be able to ask something a little more targeted like that.
Well, if we can count on lunch.
Right. If it works out, depending on who else is there.
If it might leave it to chance if we don't. I mean, why don't we just, maybe the best way is to, if you don't want to do...
I think, I think lunch is an appropriate place to, for individual members to get individual concerns dealt with. But the larger picture, you've got to all get the answer. So you've got to ask the question here.
That's right.
So you may get some of it addressed at lunch, but I'd still want to, I'd still want to ask the question so that everybody hears the answer.
Well, especially where we have so many strong candidates. And it might boil down to whether or not your particular concern was addressed or not.
Yeah.
Rather than everybody having the same question and maybe even answering it the same way.
So I guess, do we, how do people want to do this? I don't really have a strong opinion. I mean, I can, I can ask whatever questions if I get a chance for a follow-up during an interview, if I have a concern. That's, I'm comfortable doing that for myself. Do we, as a committee, want to each just, if we have a concern, ask it? Or do we want to come up with something?
I'll make a suggestion. Why don't we each pick two questions we really want to ask and add a concern question? We'll send them to you. You can collate them. And if you think anything's redundant, just let us know and we'll tweak.
Add a concern question for whoever, for every candidate you want.
If you have one for each, then maybe a four...
If you have four, okay.
Because it's likely that we all have the same concern questions because we all saw